Like I said in introduction, that would be two minutes. We will be monitoring the time, we'll give you a 10 second warning, this mean your time is up. Please address these four items or four question. And then after we're done, we're gonna try to go alphabetical on the introduction. And then the first question, there will be five questions and each question will be second. And we will give it a second warning. And then there will be one minute for closing remarks. And then we will finish our forum. There will be no questions from the floor, if you wanna call it, or from our audience, just only these questions. And just for everybody's information, these questions were they came from membership and from our members of our executive board. With that, go with Mr. Albert Abbas to start the two minute introduction. But let me just get my timer going and then I'll tell you to go ahead, just one second here. Okay, go ahead, Albert.
Can everyone mute theirs first, please? Thank you. My fellow community members, I was born and raised in Dearborn. I have lived in every beautiful corner of our city. I'm forty-four years old, I'm a product of our school system and a proud Dearborn High pioneer. I did undergraduate studies at the University of Michigan Dearborn and obtained my MBA through the University of Phoenix. My wife, Joanne, a nurse practitioner, serving the underserved, and I have four beautiful boys, two of which are currently attending Howard Elementary School and the other two will follow in the coming years. I'm the only candidate that has children in the two-year term that are in our schools. I have been involved with our schools for quite some time now. I'm the only candidate serving on two subcommittees to help the district. I'm the only candidate working alongside Dr. Glenn Maleko and the administration to come up with more fruitful ways to address our infrastructure issues. I'm the president of the Education Committee for Dearborn Community Council. I helped create programs like Field Goals for Education, donating thousands of dollars in needed revenue for our district. I have helped fund reading programs for schools, encouraging students to read with the help of Yogurt Tapiya. I have been on the forefront of raising tens of thousands of dollars to provide every student in need with coats, backpacks, and hygiene essentials throughout the community, throughout the community, with the community effort led by the Dearborn Community Council. These, along with my dedication for transparency, honesty, and the ability to stand up and provide bold ideas when others are happy with the status quo are my skills and what separates me from other candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, do we have Batul Vazi, is an attendance? No? Okay, we're gonna go to Sabrina Evans, come on, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina, or Dr. Sabrina Evans Cummings. I've been a resident with Dearborn for four and a half years. I decided to run for school board because I am currently an employee with Detroit Public Schools as a principal. I have twenty-eight years of experience in education and I also am a business owner. I own an agency, an insurance agency, that I would love to bring my ideas, some grants, to Dearborn Public Schools as a candidate or as the candidate that you guys select with Dearborn. I have two children, I recently married. I have not had any real activities in Dearborn. I do have a neighbor who I do vicariously help out. She is an employee with Dearborn Public Schools, so I vicariously work with her and help her with not only the infrastructure, but helping with activities within Dearborn Public Schools. I do have friends who are also neighbors, or are neighbors, who are friends of mine, who also have children, who attend Dearborn Public Schools, who I support as well. And what are my, I tell you my experiences, I'm also an adjunct professor in Dearborn. So I have a lot of experience and then also would like to also bring diversity to Dearborn Public School Board.
Thank you. Next, we're going to Patrick. Patrick, go ahead. Can you hear me better? Go ahead.
Yes, you.
Okay, if you cannot hear me, we're gonna go to the next one, we'll come back to you. We have Kadur Farhat.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Is this Patrick?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Patrick D'Ambrosio. I came to Michigan in nineteen seventy-two on a job transfer out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I have two, I have two boys that have graduated from Etzel Ford High School. Elementary school was long and then over to LO Smith. I've served on the Henry Ford Community Advisory Board. I've been actively involved in Dearborn for many years, Little League football, many different charitable organizations, fundraising. I've owned my own company for thirty years, which was a tool and die business. I have a great financial background along with technology for advanced learning. I wanna become a school board member, basically to give our children the best education that we possibly can give them, along with my grandchildren that live in Dearborn, that will be attending the Dearborn Public Schools in the near future. And I can bring a broad, real-world business experience and financial experience. So I'd like to give all our children in Dearborn the opportunity and my family the same type of education that my two sons had in the Dearborn Public School System.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we're going to Kadur Farhat. Kadur, go ahead.
Sammy, can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. Thank you so much, guys, for putting this together. I really appreciate it. My name is Kadur Farhat and I was born blind in Lebanon back on June eighth of nineteen ninety-three. Yet, that did not stop me from achieving quality education overseas. And as well as upon my immigration to the States eleven years ago, I came here to America looking for a better life, prosperous future, and a brighter life, obviously, and blindness, language barrier, and everything in between never stopped me to reach my goals either. I went to Etzel Ford High School and then I went to Henry Ford College. I got my associate in special ed and then I went to University of Michigan Dearborn. I pursued my undergrad in political science and currently I'm pursuing my master's in public administration and policy at the University of Michigan Dearborn as well. In the meantime, I have been heavily involved in our community on all levels, charitable organizations, nonprofits, public schools, Henry Ford College, University of Michigan Dearborn, the youth, and all of that through public speaking, advocating, and making sure that the voiceless have a voice and have an equitable opportunity and equal shot at the table. I am a good fellow, I'm a Rotary Club member, I'm a K Club member, I'm an Exchange Club member, I'm Alliance Club member. I'm running to represent Dearborn, all Dearborn, regardless of the race, ethnicity, class, side of the city, and financial situation. I'm running to represent the East equally with the West and the South and the North. I'm running because I know what hardship is and I don't want anybody to go through that. And so I'm running to provide and offer new perspectives and unique opportunities and ideas to the board and to increase more diversity and inclusion. I have no children myself, I'm twenty-seven, single, however, have a lot of family members that did and still do attend our public schools. And beside that, I'm running with passion, I'm running against my own standard of excellence. And I'm looking forward to winning on November third and becoming the first school board, blind school board trustee ever. Thank you.
I forgot to ask everybody during the introduction if you tell us if you're running for the two-years term or for six-year term. Kadur, what term you're running for?
I hope to earn your votes on the six-year term.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go next to Sharifa Galab. Sharifa, go ahead and tell us if you are a six-year term or the two-year term, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm running for the six-year term. My name is Sharifa Galab and I am the proud daughter of Yemeni immigrants. I have lived in Dearborn for over twenty-two years when my parents and I moved here. I attended and graduated from Dearborn Public Schools. I also attended Henry Ford College when it was once called Henry Ford Community College. I have my bachelor's in criminology and criminal justice. And to answer your question, I don't have children yet, even though I sometimes feel like a mom to my four-year-old niece. I currently work as a dispatcher for the Dearborn Police Department and I'm a strong supporter of public service. Much of my previous work experience was focused on empowering and involving parents for the betterment of their children. From working as a substitute teacher in Dearborn Public Schools, I transitioned to working as a youth counselor, which focused primarily on kids in their adolescent years. I have also worked for leaps and bounds as a parent educator, where I did home visits and worked on building following the model of parents as teachers. The goal there was to make sure that the children were meeting their developmental stages with parents' participation. I grew up in a family of eight where I learned about the principle of living within your own means. And if elected to the board, I will apply the same principles and be very wise when dealing with taxpayers' dollars. My respect and desire for quality education, in addition to my work experience, ultimately inspired me to want to serve on the Board of Education. I want to ensure that our children receive the best education in order to build independent and self-sufficient individuals. I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this forum and I hope to earn your support in this forum of your viewers. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going next to Paul Goddard. Paul, go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Goddard and I'm running for the six-year term. My family and I moved to Dearborn in two thousand and one from Warren. And my wife and I have five children, four of whom have graduated from Dearborn Public Schools. Two of our sons graduated from Dearborn High. I have a daughter who graduated from the Magnet Program. And I have a son who graduated most recently from the Henry Ford Collegiate Program. I've been engaged in schools ever since my kids were in school. I've been the PTA treasurer, lot of scouting activity, I've been the Cub Master, I was the treasurer for our scout trip for a while. So those are some district activities and then tons of volunteer stuff that never gets written down, you know, behind the scenes type stuff. The particular skills and experiences that qualify me to serve on the board. Of course, I've got an education BS in business from Brigham Young University and I have an MBA from the University of Michigan Dearborn. I'm a veteran of the US Army, I was an Arabic linguist, and so I studied the Middle Eastern culture and Fusha for about four years. I have business experience, I've been working with Ford Motor Company since nineteen ninety-nine. I did a tour with Volvo Car Corporation in Sweden for five years and studied and learned Swedish while I was there. Presently, I'm serving as the Learning and Development Manager for the Finance Skill Team overseeing learning and development for over four thousand five hundred people. And I'm a trained mindfulness coach. So one of the unique things there is that not a whole lot of things get me upset or anxious, I'm a pretty calm guy. So that's about me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going next to Nafayla. Nafayla, are you there?
I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Nafayla Khaidar. I have been living in, I'm actually a product of Dearborn Schools from elementary all the way through high school. I went to Becker Elementary, Lori Middle School, and Fortson High School. I've served, let me just make sure, oh, and I currently have two children in Dearborn Schools. My daughter Naveen is an eighth grader at Bryant Middle School and my daughter Nadine is a tenth grader at Dearborn High School. District activities, I've done quite a bit, so let's hear it. I've served as a member of the Dearborn Public Schools Strategic Planning Committee, the Dearborn Education Foundation, the School Improvement Planning Committee, the Early Learning Coalition. I'm currently a board member of the Dearborn Goodfellows. And I served for five years as a Dearborn PTA Council President. That includes thirty-three buildings and over thirty-five hundred members. I've served the Special Needs Community as a board member at the Access Hope House in Dearborn. I've attended every school board meeting in the last six years. I spearheaded a parent movement to advocate for neighborhood schools, this is really important to me. And I've served students in struggling communities as an AmeriCorps member through the Michigan College Access Network. And I'm currently serving at the University of Michigan Castle Board of Affiliates. I served on the LEHC Board for Drug-Free Communities. And I actually served as a Recording Secretary for the Dearborn Democratic Club. During my service for PTA, my service was so distinguished that I was actually invited by the National PTA to speak on inclusion and diversity in two thousand and nineteen. And that was the first time that Dearborn has been represented at the national conference. I believe that an educated society is a strong society and I hope that I could earn your support in November.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna go to Maali Lokman. Are you there, Maali? Maali, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I was just unmuting. Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Maali Lokman. I'm an educator, so I started my educational journey when, right out of high school. I started as a youth leader, a tutor through Access and Solana Intermediate. I was also a sub parapro at that time, where I got to work with ESL students, special needs students throughout the district. I did that as I completed my teaching certificate at the University of Michigan Dearborn. I'm a product of Dearborn Public Schools. I started my own journey in kindergarten and went all the way through high school, graduated from Etzel Ford, started off at Henry Ford College before going to Dearborn. After getting my teaching certificate, I taught for about eight years, so eight years as a classroom teacher and six years as a parapro and a tutor. So total about fourteen years in the classroom. And then I transitioned into a policy-related field. I wanted to take my impact outside of the classroom. So I earned my master's in international relations from Harvard University, came back to Michigan and worked as an associate dean at WC3D, the neighboring community college. In that capacity, I was able to learn about how the administrative roles of a college and overseeing campus operations. So all of that education-related experience would make me a really good candidate for trustee because I know the ins and outs of lower-level education, so elementary all the way to high school. I've worked with special needs population, ESL population, and then I also have the administrative experience of running a college. What I like to do outside of work is I engage the community, I'm very active in the Dearborn community. I like to mentor college students and guide their path with education, their educational journey. I'm currently completing a fellowship with the Kellogg Foundation Center for Creative Leadership that fellowship centers around community leadership, children, and marginalized communities. So I'm hoping that when I'm elected on November third, I'll be able to bridge the gaps between our community and ensure everyone has access to equitable education throughout Dearborn. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next candidate is Mr. Adel Muzab. Adel, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the Dearborn Dems for holding this forum to inform the voters on where candidates stand. My name is Adel Muzab. I'm a Dearborn father, software developer for Boma Health, and an active citizen who loves Dearborn Schools and Henry Ford College. I'm a proud product of Dearborn Schools. I attended Fortson High School as an immigrant student, as well as Henry Ford College as a dual enrollment student. I'm a first-generation college graduate who was raised to value the importance of higher education. I've been a resident in Dearborn for twenty years. I have a bachelor's in computer engineering and science from the University of Michigan in Dearborn and an MBA from Wayne State University. My oldest son attends Gear Park Elementary and my wife is attending her last semester at Henry Ford College. And my youngest sister is a graduating senior at Etzel Ford High School, not to count so many nephews and nieces who are at DPS. Our taxpayers deserve a good return on their investment, a successful, fiscally responsible, and innovative district. I am running again to ensure that quality education for our students, that we have strong schools and happy educators. I will always advocate for an equitable allocation of resources for all students. I'm an active member of AYSB, an organization dedicated to promoting higher education. I served as its president for three years. I also have been involved with Gear Park PTA, the League of Women Voters, serving as the nominating chair in two thousand and nineteen, vice president of Eastbourne Neighborhood Association, Dearborn Rotary, and this Democratic Club. At AYSB, I founded a mentoring program back in two thousand and nine. And I'm here to make sure that our district is responsive to the community needs. I'm bringing leadership, sound reasoning, community-built relationships, and listening skills to the Board of Education.
Thank you. Next, Mary.
Good evening and thank you, everyone, for hosting this. My name is Mary Pelichkov. I'm running for reelection to the six-year term. I am currently finishing up my second term to have served ten years on the school board to date. I have lived in the district for thirty-two years, but my husband's family dates back to the nineteen twenties. So they have a long history in this community. My children both graduated from Etzel and Henry Ford College, back then it was Henry Ford Community College in the mid-two thousands. The district activities are numerous as well. I began my career, like every parent, as a PTA president for the local elementary school, went on to serve six years on PTA council, and then was on every task force that was ever imagined in this district from the late nineteen nineties until I was elected to the school board in two thousand and eight for my first term. I have also brought skill sets of, I was an elected charter commissioner in two thousand and five and helped rewrite the city charter that was successfully voted on. I have spent time as a City Beautiful Commissioner and am currently a City Beautiful Commissioner Emeritus. I retired after almost fifteen years in that position. I've spent nine years as the President of the Federation of Neighborhood Associations, which is an umbrella organization similar to the PTA council, which is a resource for all of our local neighborhood associations as well. I just wanna make sure I haven't left anything out of. I have been recognized around the community because I have been a resource and bridge between city issues and school district issues. Spent ten years now on the board. Was that the end, Sammy? Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's it. Thank you. Last, Irene Watts, please go ahead.
All right. Hello, my name is Irene Watts and I'm running for one of the six-year terms. I grew up nearby in Dearborn Heights and I've now lived in Dearborn for fifteen years. My husband, he grew up here since birth. We have two children. Our daughter attends Lindbergh Elementary and our son also attended Lindbergh Elementary. He graduated and currently attends Country Day under scholarship. I've been involved in the schools for over eight years, volunteering my time as a PTA member for the Lindbergh Fun Fair, haunted school, holiday boutiques, and several times I've held Dearborn Home Room Mom. I've participated in the school cleanup parades as part of my duty as a commissioner on the Dearborn City Beautiful Commission. I was chair of the schools under the commission where I reinstituted a grant partnering with Mayor O'Reilly, Superintendent Maleko, and the Dearborn Foundation. That trust entailed a grant, I'm sorry, that grant entailed a allocation of nine hundred dollars that would go towards school projects that exemplify beautifying their schools while also including their curriculum. I'm a former teacher of twenty-two years and I have extensive classroom experience in a fast-paced and changing environment. I was also the school administrator fourteen of those last twenty-two years, so both duties. That required me to develop and balance a budget and to create a curriculum that I worked with teachers and parents to implement. I've served on an advisory board for the state of Michigan revising rules and regulations for childcare centers and preschools. Since leaving the classroom, I've devoted my time to volunteering at various nonprofits in the Detroit area that support children, immigrant women, veterans, and the homeless, including Brilliant Detroit, Starfish Family Services, Heroes Movement, and the Catch Charity along with Cement International. I've also co-founded a charity event called All Things Michigan that features Michigan-made products, services, and businesses benefiting the Catch Charity and Heroes Movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ready for a question? Sabrina, Janet Schultz, go ahead. Janet?
Yes, Sammy, I'm here. And I'd like to remind the candidates that the questions are on sixty seconds, you'll have to respond. And we're gonna start the first question with Sabrina Evans Cummings and then we'll go alphabetically on from there. And let me just repeat the question and then we'll go ahead and get the answers. Do you support choice policies that would allow families to use their students per pupil state allowance towards private schools? And by the way, that question is from one of our members. So go ahead, Sabrina.
So my answer is no, I do not support choice policies to allow families for per pupil, I do not agree with that. I believe that our public schools are our foundations. And when you take money from our public schools and put it in private education, it takes away the foundations that we have, that we're trying to build within our communities. So I believe that dollars should not be allocated to private schools.
Thank you. And Patrick is next.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Patrick? Patrick, are you there? All right, let's move on to Kadur. All right.
I'm sorry, I'm having problems with my mute. It keeps going on and off. My answer to that question would be no. And due to the limited public funds, should go to the public schools. And Michigan has stepped away from its obligations to properly fund, you know, the schools and colleges for over twenty years. And that would be my answer.
Thank you. Okay, Kadur.
Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. So my answer to that is simply no, especially in such time right now where the budget is tight and we need every single dollar that we can get to support our public education and our public schools. And as Sabrina said, that public school has been and will remain our major foundation. Though I do respect, you know, people that they encourage that or they urge to do that. But in my own opinion, I think that every dollar should be going toward our public schools because we have a lot of challenges to tackle. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sharifa's next.
Hi. No, public school money should go to the public schools, which are already underfunded as is. I'm against any attempt to diminish the funds and resources available to our public schools. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Paul Goddard?
Hi, so I'm not a man of many words, so I'm not gonna say what everyone else has said so far. In a word, no. I also think that the question is interesting. It's not the family's budget, it's the way that they do it per head. That's a method of allocation, so it doesn't really belong to the families. It's a public fund that's allocated to the schools based on. I'm not gonna add to what's already been said. I don't support it, no.
Thank you. Nafayla? Thank you. Nofaila?
Hi Anne. So the very first time that Betsy DeVos spoke of this, I stood in a protest outside of Tannic Building with many students and parents and I said no. And to this day, I continue to say no. This is Betsy DeVos's initiative to funnel tax dollars towards private schools that are for profit. These are public funds. They need to stay for our public school students and that's it. So absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Malali, am I saying your name right?
Malali's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also say no. I just feel like we need to keep the public funding going towards our schools because the public school is the crux of society, right? We need to just focus on improving the experience that students have and providing whatever supports, services that the parents need for their kids to succeed. But I would definitely say we need to keep the money in the public school system.
Thank you. Adele?
Absolutely not. Public education has been under siege and underfunded for decades. And in fact, Vice President, it was reported that Michigan was dead last in funding growth to a public education. Immediately after I got appointed to the board in April 2019, I went to Lansing on multiple occasions to advocate for more funding for our schools. Our representatives, Hamud and Santana, have been very supportive. However, other members in the legislature who are out of our district are not as supportive. And that's why I began reaching out to school board members in their district to get them to help us advocate as a collective unit for public education. As also a commissioner for the governor, I have been very vocal on funding for public education. So I'll continue that fight for more funds for our public education because it's the foundation of the greater good in society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary? Mary?
Clearly, as a board trustee, I would be a no for that. We advocate for public funds all the time. As it is illegal to try to divert those funds currently, we have to do everything in our power to ensure that we vote correctly November 3rd to make sure that it's not at our level that we can control those policies. But we certainly can speak out loud and strong to make sure that and use our vote. I've always said our voice is our vote. So that's the time that we can let it be known that public monies go to public schools. That's the foundation of our nation.
Okay, thank you. Irene?
Certainly no.
Okay, and Albert?
I do not support the policies that would allow per pupil state allowance to be used towards any private schools. Our infrastructure right here in Dearborn is crumbling and we need every penny to fix what is in our own backyard. Our students and teachers deserve better than what we as a district have given them in terms of resources as well as infrastructure. We need to create workshops tailored to real-life situations. We need to create learning spaces that inspire the children. We need to bring down our student-to-teacher ratios. We need to provide them with a safe learning experience and invest in technology in how students actually learn. We need to provide more resources for students with learning disabilities and give them the best pathway for success. I even believe that lunch period should be a way for students to learn about health rather than eat as fast as they can and move on. So we need the money to invest in our own education and our public school system. So the answer is flat no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the next question. I hope it will be quick like the first one. I'm going to ask the question, please describe a strength our district can be proud of. And we're going to start with Patrick.
I feel our school strengths K through 12 through the Henry Ford College Collegiate Academy and the Henry Ford Community Early College, 80% of Dearborn graduating students move on to go to college. You know, we've received a National Blue Ribbon Scholar District Award three years in a row and a president setting achievements for the district, the STEM program at the Michael Berry Center. So, you know, we show great strengths there.
Great, thank you. Next, we're going to Kadur.
Awesome. So we have so many things to celebrate and to embrace in our great public school system. From the great graduation rate to the college enrollment rate, we have the recognition that we have been receiving. We've got the great diversity and inclusion that we assemble as a model for the nation and the world to follow. We've got great program with this team, science, technology, engineering, art and math. We've got great, you know, Collegiate Academy, Early College. We've got so many things. We've got a lot of students who go to Harvard and Oxford and many other prestigious universities worldwide. So we've got so many great things to be so proud of.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, Sharifa Galab.
Our school district has many strengths, but the one that stands out the most is the value our residents and parents place on education. Even when we disagree on how to find solutions to problems facing our schools, we always end up coming together to ensure the best quality education for our children. And that is what I'm most proud of. Other strengths that I've seen that come to mind are the diversity of our staff and student body as well as a professional development for our staff, which is known to be the best in the state. The combination of both these things help prepare our students for the real world and its diverse challenges.
Thank you. Next, Paul Gather. Paul, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you. It is like others for me have said, there's a lot to choose from. But if I had to choose one, right now I'm most proud about the Henry Ford Collegiate Program. I think it's a fantastic partnership between the college and our high schools. It allows a fantastic bridge for students who can still live at home or live locally and if they're not ready for a big move to go off to a college, to a different university in a different state. And Henry Ford offers a fantastic education at a wonderful price. So it's just really great for our high school students to get their toes dipped into the college experience without going full bore. And it's just a wonderful program and transition.
Thank you. Next, Nofaila Hyder.
Hello. Okay, so I'm proud of a lot of things in our district and one of them is the pipeline to higher education. The Early College Program has three programs right now. Education Program where we are producing our own teachers, the Manufacturing Program and the Medical Program. Students can get a two-year degree without a penny out of the parents' pockets. We have a great partnership with HFC, with Henry Ford College, with Dole Enrollment Collegiate Academy. And our graduation rates are way above 96%. We have amazing support for newcomers and for immigrant families with the ELL program. And then we have an adult education program because it's not only the students that need to learn English and move forward. We support many languages. I believe it's over 25 language in our district. So it's a very diverse district. And we actually produce two state superintendents from Dearborn Public Schools. So I think that's a point of pride for us.
Thank you, Nofaila. Next, we're going to Malali. Malali?
So I think some things to be proud of and strengths in our district are definitely the fact that we're such a diverse community. Not just that we have so much diversity, but the fact that Dearborn Public Schools does a great job of really accommodating that and offering an inclusive environment. I mean, I know we have a lot of work to do, but definitely we have some great successes. And definitely the teacher professional development. So when I was doing my student teaching in Dearborn at Slinea School, a lot of the PDs that I attended were transformational. I took a lot of that experience with me in every other school I taught in and even when I pursued my masters at Harvard. And I can definitely say it's some of the best training I've had in my life. But also back to the diversity, I've been to so many different schools. I've worked within Dearborn. I've worked in Freshwood, I've worked abroad. And I can definitely say that we offer the highest quality education for students that come from an ELL background. So that's something to definitely be proud of.
Thank you, Malali. Next question is going to Adele. Adele?
Yeah, as mentioned by the colleagues, there are so many things to be proud of. If I have to choose one thing, I would say teachers and staff. We're blessed to have skilled teachers and staff who are amazing at what they do. We entrust them with our precious children to be taught, trained and to be future leaders. I'm very proud of what they do for our students day in and day out, especially during these troubling times. The teachers and staff reflect a diverse body of skilled professionals. I had the honor to work with them since 2008 to improve the state of education at our schools and Henry Ford College. I have seen their tenacity, their courage and their hard work. I've seen their smiles at graduation, seeing the fruits of their work. I've also listened to their concerns and stood up for their rightful demands and I will continue doing that on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. Next, we're going to Mary. Mary?
Hi. Yeah, I really have to agree, especially with my colleague, Mr. Marozav, that because there are so many things to be proud of in this district. And I had a whole running list originally and everybody has covered them. Our P14 district, the Collegiate Academies, I was on the board when we hired Brian Winston and he was the one who started us on this path of phenomenal instructional programs that meets the needs of our most challenged students who need support, to the ones who need the challenge to move on to a graduation success. But I also have to agree that our teamwork in this district is just outstanding. We don't see the same kind of infighting that you would see outside in other districts at times. And the fact that we can keep a balanced budget and keep people moving in a positive direction, keep our staff educated. We have so many things going in our favor that people, I beg you to please look at our DearbornSchools.org website and really give it a thorough overgoing because it shows it all.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we're going to Irene.
Yes, thank you. So my sentiment was reflected, I think, with many of our candidates here. It was difficult to find just one strength. But I think as a district, we value education and I think our graduation rate of 95% is reflective of that. Also knowing that many of our students will continue on to HFC. I think that is something that a lot of districts will probably be able to probably look at as a model for what they should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to Albert.
Okay, so obviously there's a lot of good things to be proud of within our district. But the question was clearly, what's the biggest strength of our district? And it clearly has to be the teachers and staff that consistently go above and beyond for our students. Even when they lack the resources, deal with the crumbling infrastructure and their pay structure doesn't reflect their worth. Our district is sending students to Ivy League schools and universities that are amongst the best in the world. Our students become some of the most successful in the nation from being top doctors, researchers, politicians and so on. And every single one of them gives back to our community. We are raising champions and our educators deserve a lot of that credit. So thank you to all the teachers and administration that have helped our students propel into a field of excellence in education.
Thank you. Last, Sabrina?
Yes, I would like to echo what everyone has said thus far. Just, you know, I'm just new to Dearborn. I moved to Dearborn because I have grandchildren. Even though I do work for Detroit Public Schools, I've moved to Dearborn because I love the peace and I love the fact that not only was I attended Henry Ford Community College myself, you know, back in the 80s, but I liked the fact that when I moved to Dearborn, the neighbors were just phenomenal. And I like the fact that the graduation rate that I noticed when I moved here was high. I saw that they had a STEM program. I also run a STEM program with Detroit Public Schools. I like the dual enrollment programs they have. I looked through the website that Mary talked about, just reading the information. It was, you know, very expensive and it was very detailed. I also looked at strategic plan that I also liked reading. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to the third question. We're going back to Janet. And we're going to start the question with Kadur. Go ahead Janet. Janet, are you there? Okay. If Janet is not with us, I can ask the third question. What are your recommendations for addressing needed maintenance for the infrastructure of our schools since the BRICS proposal failed? With that question, we'll start with Kadur. Kadur?
Thank you. So obviously I did support the school bond, the bond proposal that was presented to the residents last year. And I did support it simply for the reason that we need to see these repairs happening for the betterment of our schools and therefore our students, staff and the entire community. Dearborn residents are paying quite a high taxes, so they need to see something worthy in return. However, since that was failed and voters have spoken, I simply believe and I'm more than happy if I like it to lead a comprehensive dialogue, to put in a more comprehensive plan, to sit down together as a community. And I'm pretty sure that our community, our Dearborn community, is not going to say no for more money and for more taxes if needed, I'm saying. You know, as long as it's going to go into the right spot and make our school and infrastructure better. So the answer is in a nutshell, to get together around the table and I had a proven record of doing that throughout my advocacy work. Get everybody on the table, all the decision makers, stakeholders and our community so we can support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Kadur. Next, we're going to Sharifa.
Yeah. These address major issues with urgent, which were needed to be addressed. Now that the voters rejected it, we need to have a different approach, which should be no nonsense and grounded in facts, not emotions. I recognize the community's involvement input are necessary to resolve the issues of overcrowding infrastructure and infrastructure. Consulting with stakeholders and addressing concerns should be a priority. We will never have a perfect bond, but we need a bond that can address all the district's needs while spending tax dollars wisely. We need to go back and see where the areas of concerns are and address them head-on.
Great, thank you, Sharifa. Next, we're going to go to Paul Gather.
Yeah, so I didn't mention it in my introduction, but one of the things that does make me unique in all the candidates here is that I'm a prior certified internal auditor. And as part of working in the Ford Finance Organization for over 20 years, managing budgets over $250 million and personnel into the thousands. This is a tricky one, right? The bond failed. It was 51.7% to 48.3%. So obviously, there's good reason why a lot of people voted no. We need to dig into those line items. There's some lack of clarity. And we have to dig deep and we have to partner with one another and that's going to take some effort amidst COVID and everything else we've got going on. As other candidates have said, we've got some issues. Our buildings cannot stay unaddressed. And so we need to dig in and do the tough work of going through every line item and making sure that we have valid proposals. And our decisions need to be made based on sound data analysis, not emotion or hearsay. So yeah, we just need to dig in and make that happen.
Thank you so much. We're going to Nofaila. Next?
Yeah. So as the PTA Council President at the time of the BRICS bond, I actually listened to all of my members and we ended up endorsing the bond as Dearborn PTA. However, I've always said that the Dearborn voters are educated voters. They don't just vote based on emotion. And I think the taxpayers spoke loud and clear when the bond failed, unfortunately. What broke my heart most about the bond failing was that the special needs department did not get the, you know, the updates that they needed. The BRICS bond divided our community and I think we need to stop talking about it and we need to start moving forward with what the next step is. We have a lot of work to do. And if we ask the voters for money again, we need to have long-term solutions at the table. We need to have direct and transparent messaging. And we need to have a fiscally responsible plan. We need to see where this money is going and we need to know and let the Dearborn voters know exactly where every dollar is going.
Thank you, Nofaila.
You're welcome.
Next, we're going to Malali.
So similar to what a lot of my colleagues have said and some of it's with the BRICS bond, I think if the community had a little more time to process it and it was a little bit more refined, they would have been more receptive to it. It's evident that a lot of our infrastructure needs some work and I'm sure everyone in the community would be interested in those improvements. But they also want to make sure that their money is being well-spent. So if we could provide more transparency, if we could present So if we could provide more transparency, if we could present it to them in a way that they would feel more comfortable with the way the money is being spent, I think the next time around, it might be a little more successful.
Thank you. Adam?
I have supported and advocated heavily for the passage of the BRIC bond. I held myself many educational seminars to explain the bond to residents, and I was always available for questions. There were always disagreements, and that's fine. The upgrades have been identified, and there was a committee that brought a report to the board. We, as a board, need to look at different ways of financing those projects. Other communities have looked at sync funds, which are different than bonds and probably more appealing to our community. However, we must engage the community. It was said loud and clear. We have to listen to their ideas and to their concerns. We have to take them into consideration. And I've asked for listening sessions during our post-BRIC discussion, in which board members, they need to tour the city and talk to the taxpayers in ways to fund the upgrades and building newer buildings as well. That was heard as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Next candidate, Mary?
Okay, as a board member, I also, it was a unanimous decision of the board to go forward with the BRIC bond that had spent 16 months of a task force developing. We know our needs. We know what we need to do. And this isn't maintenance. I just want to clarify that. Bonds cannot be used for maintenance and repairs. This is for upgrades. This is for technology. This was for a lot of things that we don't want to use our general fund to support in order to take away from what's going on in the classroom, but to improve the classroom environment for our students and our staff. And we're going to have to move forward with something. We really didn't have an opportunity to have this discussion with the COVID environment that occurred so that we couldn't get it out there this November. We do have another large local election coming up next year, and I anticipate that we will be back at the drawing table. We know we have tax fatigue in this city, and we will have to find a way to come together to scale our decisions.
Thank you, Mary. We're going to Irene.
Yeah, so I was in favor of the BRIC bond. Unfortunately, a majority of Dearborn voters did not support the bond, leaving important lessons to be learned. As a community, we need to ensure that all interested voices are heard when garnering support for any school bond, something that I believe we can do better. We also need to invite all invested and interested stakeholders to the table to ensure transparency when identifying all the needed repairs, which may or may not be in dispute. And in the end, everybody wants to have their voice heard. But I believe you will find that we have more in common than not. And all those participating want their property values to continue to grow in relation to a high-achieving school district. I think that's what's important, that we all want that to happen.
Thank you. Next, Albert?
It's quite clear where I stand in terms of addressing the maintenance and infrastructure issues. I stood at the forefront of educating our community to realize the issues that we face with the BRIC bond. I believe the BRIC bond wasn't good enough for our students, nor is it good enough for our community. I believe that our schools needed to be modernized, not patched. I believe that we can't continually reach into the pockets of our residents, especially our senior citizens that live on a fixed income without exploring and identifying grants from the state, federal, and private sectors that we rarely apply for. I believe that we have few schools that have a story and history that should always be part of the educational, that should always be part of the educational infrastructure. However, we have many schools that would save the district hundreds of millions of dollars by tearing them down and building new. According to the administration, it costs taxpayers over $400 a square foot to renovate versus $225 a square foot to build the state of our facility. This can't be done overnight and on our emergency funds. We need a solid 20-year plan to address our infrastructure issues. And I'm proud to say that I stood up for the bond where I felt like I was alone at the time.
Thank you, Albert. Thank you. We're gonna go to Sabrina.
Yes, I supported the bond. And I supported it as a new resident in Dearborn. But I also think the recommendation that I will see as an educator would be to make sure that we educate our taxpayers, we educate our stakeholders, allow them to understand what the purpose of the BRIC bond was for. As a new resident of Dearborn, I know I received literature, but I don't remember receiving other information as far as, hey, we're gonna have this particular meeting here or there as a new resident. But I think we need to make sure that we educate all our residents to understand the purpose and the plans for the bond proposal, but also to have weekly or bi-weekly meetings with our stakeholders and our taxpayers, like a coffee and a conversation with educators, with parents, with students, and with our community and our business owners.
Thank you. Next, we're going to Patrick.
Yeah, I also supported the BRIC bond. And, you know, I think the community should have been better informed and educated about the personal impact on the bond on the students. You know, the education, the need to serve the increasing student population, you know, and the need for the state of art of technology. You know, the state revenues needs to be increased, you know, and parents should, you know, personally convey the needs and success of our students. So, you know, I support that, and we need to educate, you know, the people of the community in regards to what the BRIC bond's all about, so we can take care of our needs for our infrastructures.
Thank you. With that, I've done from the third of the questions. I'm gonna ask Janet, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, you can ask the fourth question, and it would start with Sharifa.
And so the fourth question is, you're aware of, but let me just repeat it. If elected, what would you hope would be a key accomplishment of the board? And like Sammy said, we'll start with Sharifa.
In addition to addressing our overcrowding and infrastructure issues, as stated earlier tonight, a key accomplishment would be to ensure safety of our schools, at our schools. How can we provide instruction in the safest way during difficult times, such as the pandemic we are facing? The COVID crisis is something we have never seen before, but nothing really says we won't face something like this again in the future. That is why we should be prepared and have contingency plans in place to avoid improvising under pressure if anything like this were to ever happen again. So the safety is what I would say.
Thank you. Paul?
Hey, this is another one of those questions where we could list off several things, but it asked for a key accomplishment. So I'm just gonna choose one. And I would have to say that I would like to see school for everyone start one hour later than it does today. Furthermore, I'd like to see the high school students start last. There are multiple studies that indicate these adolescents' brains, the way that they grow and develop, are best done with their biorhythms and their circadian rhythms to be waking up later in the morning. So I'd like to do that. I don't see any reason why we can't do it. We should be, Dearborn should be leading the way. There's multiple school districts across the nation that have done this. There's no reason why we can't do it. And now is the time to do it with COVID interrupting everything we've got. Let's go for it and do what's right for the children.
Thank you. Nofaila?
Thank you, Janet. Paul, if you and I ever do make it to the table and you put that motion on the table, I will second it. Our number-one responsibility as a school board is to have a balanced budget. With that being said, our school district has a capacity issue. We have an infrastructure issue, and we need long-term solutions. I would like to see that addressed. Neighborhood schools are so important in Dearborn. Equity across the district, including the special needs education department. This needs to be discussed. Curriculum equity and improvement, as well as bullying, need to be addressed. Solutions to these goals can only be found using transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. And at the state level, it's really important to keep, you know, my priorities are funding, funding, and more funding. And then standardized testing, supporting teachers, and supporting more educational decisions being made at the local level. We should have the power in our hands to make our own decisions. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Nofaila.
Maali?
My key accomplishment, especially considering COVID, is to provide the teachers, the parents, and the students, all of us, before that we can possibly provide them in order for them to achieve a high-quality level of education during this pandemic. It's gonna take some time to get back to some level of the normal. And the families and the students and the educators all need as much support as they could possibly get. So I would want to ensure that we're able to provide that support and to provide it in an equitable manner, where all schools, all students on every side of Dearborn are getting a good amount of support.
Thank you, Adele.
Yes. I'll mention it for the district and for the college. So for the district, a key accomplishment would be a big jump in college readiness for our students. I'd like to see that with a 10% increase. Our job as a district is to prepare students for post-high school education. I'm very proud of the accomplishments of so many of our graduates who have gone to Ivy League universities. We need to do more for our students to be ready for college. As for the college, a key accomplishment would be increasing enrollment. Our college needs to stay affordable and accessible to students. Given the current pandemic, and virtually every community college is down with enrollment, a key goal would be to be back in positive numbers of enrollment at 5%. In my short tenure, I have worked with my colleagues and demanded from the president to improve the student experience on campus, and many students were frustrated with financial aid, for example. And we have many strides in this aspect. College and the district have to be responsive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. Mary?
I, sorry, I unmuted myself. I have to say that originally, I would say that the infrastructure needs were going to have to be front and stun or come January. But my real worry is that we're still gonna be dealing with the pandemic issues. And of course, getting students back into the buildings and staff feeling safe and secure in the buildings is going to have to be our first priority before we tackle the next. We're gonna kind of have to do a juggling act with needs. But getting the students and the staff back to a sense of normalcy is going to be our biggest focus come January. And hopefully, we'll be in a position to achieve that. I don't have great hopes that this pandemic is going to play out quite that quickly, though.
Thank you, Mary. Is Irene there?
Irene, yes. So my key accomplishment would be ensuring our schools are safe, our students and staff members. Our students, they have to feel safe beyond the physical improvements of the building. All of our children have experienced trauma due to COVID-19. And it's imperative that we address their social and emotional needs daily to mitigate any long-term effects caused by trauma. COVID-19 is also affecting our teachers and our support staff. You know, we're seeing a teacher shortage combined with teacher burnout within the first month of school. This is a problem that adversely affects students and teachers alike. We need to ensure that all of our staff members have received social and emotional professional development and given support for proper implementation, not only for themselves, but also for all of our students in our district.
Thank you, Irene. Albert?
Okay, so every answer I've given you guys today has dealt with some way with the infrastructure issues. So this is no different. I believe that the most important aspect is to deliver a solid infrastructural plan, a 20-year plan. And that's the responsibility of the board and all other people that should be involved, such as the consulting firms and the residents. But infrastructure today, in today's day and age, after COVID, we realize that it should also include technology. Technology is a form of infrastructure so that we can prepare for the COVID-type events that have our community so that our students will be more well-prepared during a crisis like what we faced. I believe that we need to develop a clean bond and deliver it to the residents with the utmost transparency. It's critical today. So it's infrastructure and technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Sabrina?
I agree with Mary and Irene. Due to the COVID causing issues within our schools. Working in schools now, it's been a challenge seeing, you know, students come in or they've been at home. But I would like to personally see a teaching and learning option for students and teachers, where they can either have a virtual option, a face-to-face option, and/or a hybrid option. So that gives the parents and the teachers the opportunity to select what option they would like to educate or come in and learn in the learning environment. So those would be my key takeaways or my key accomplishments for going forward.
Thank you, Sabrina. Patrick?
Yeah, my keynotes would be the assurance of the safety of our teachers and students as they return to school face-to-face in classes. Also, the infrastructure. The infrastructure definitely needs to be addressed when you look around and see how these schools, all the issues that they're having in these schools. And the other thing I'd like to see be continued is our blue-ribbon model school district. You know, it'd be great to see it go for four years in a row.
Thank you. Kadar?
Absolutely. Thanks so much once again. So on top and beside the other thing that I'm running for, in such exceptional and challenging time, I believe that we should provide our staff, parents, our students with every single form and shape of support that we can. And that's include, obviously, everybody, English second language education students and non-special education students, as well for the staff as well. And that includes mental health. And forget about the pandemic. I mean, besides the pandemic, mental health and substance abuse has been hitting our Dearborn community quite so hard for quite some time now. So I would like to see that is integrated into the curriculum, that it's no longer just something like with a couple of community collaborations, which are awesome, and they have to be around the table as well, certainly. But this particular field has to be integrated into the curriculum so we can build a healthier environment. And then for the college, I love to maintain our diversity and make it more even affordable and to expand our partnership with more neighboring colleges and universities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's the final question. Janet, you can ask it, and we're gonna start with Paul. Go ahead, Janet.
So how should the district work to meet the learning needs of students from other cultures and speak other languages? And...
Paul?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. So obviously, our ESL programs need to continue to be a concerted effort in our schools. But I want to, I would like to branch out and talk about the parents and the school district liaison and being partners with a lot of these parents who also do not speak the language. We need to think innovatively and think long-term. Like, we were innovative in getting early college program and the Henry Ford Collegiate Program. Maybe we can get innovative with the college and offer programs that support these parents so that the children in the home also have the support and watch their parents learning and growing so that learning is a lifetime activity. So ESL, and let's get innovative and think about how we can better engage parents.
Thank you. Nofaila?
Yeah, me, myself. I'd like to start out by saying that in Dearborn right now, we have an amazing ESL program. Our school district is very diverse. We have students from all over the world. And some are learning English for the very first time in our classrooms today. And we're able to accommodate all of these different languages. To create equity for our English learners, their socioeconomic status, their ethnic origin, their personal circumstances cannot become an obstacle in achieving a good education. We need to place systematic help for students who fall behind or at a disadvantage. Now, we need to give priority to early education for newcomers and create an inclusion plan for immigrant students into the mainstream education so that we can prevent dropouts and remove dead ends and direct resources to students with needs. We're also very good at bringing the parents into the classrooms. Parent involvement is very important and that's been very successful in helping students.
Thank you, Nafayla. Molly?
So much of what other people have mentioned before, Dearborn, we all know is very rich in diversity and embracing that and cultivating an appreciation for that is key. Our ESL program, like Nafayla had mentioned, is absolutely incredible. I myself am an ESL-endorsed teacher. And I've taught ESL abroad, I've taught ESL in neighboring districts in Dearborn Heights, and I've taught ESL as a long-term sub here throughout the district. And I can definitely attest that we have one incredible ESL program that is not found anywhere else in the world. So definitely investing more in that, but also building bridges between schools throughout the district. So our city is somewhat, it appears to be somewhat segregated in the way that the schools are laid out. So maybe in introducing different initiatives where students from the west end and the east end and the south end can be exposed to each other at an earlier age and involved together outside of sports. Definitely build and cultivate an appreciation for the diversity in our city.
Thank you, Adele.
Yep, we have to aspire for equity across the board, which means offering support and resources for all students to succeed, in this case, new students. I was a bilingual student myself at Fortin High School and we have one of the best bilingual programs in the state. English language learners should be challenged as well. At one point, I felt like things were easy for me, so I had to ask for that challenge. Student clubs that celebrate cultures are another opportunity also to support our students. Our students need to feel welcome, embraced and celebrated. One thing that new immigrants usually face is bullying. A zero tolerance bullying policy must be enforced. I'm very proud to pass an anti-bullying resolution last year and recognizing October as a National Bullying Prevention Month. The last thing that I'd like to say is that I will continue to advocate for mentoring, especially for ESL students who are new to the country. And this will heavily build their self-esteem and get them so many opportunities.
Thank you, Adel.
Mary?
Yes, as everybody has noted, and we have been to many national conferences, our ESL program is phenomenal. We've spent a couple of decades improving our endorsements of highly qualified teachers in every building. We also support a professional development for all of our staff every year through our bilingual department. That being said, we also hire many from within our community so that it supports not only the language barrier, but the cultural differences as well when we hire our own. And we are growing new teachers. As mentioned, we have a new collegiate academy that is a pre-education associate degree. And we will hopefully gain even more teachers that come from within the community, understand our community members and can identify with them more. The PTAs have always been a source to provide parent interaction. And we have worked hard with a newcomer academy for 17-year-olds who come in not knowing the language as well so that they can get a high school diploma and move on to a college education.
Thank you, Mary. Irene?
Thank you. I'm a fellow ESL student in first generation, so this is important and dear to me. I think we should have a, we should create a state, a staff cultural committee to select books around culture and present our findings to fellow staff members and school board. We should select a different culture every month and share those findings during staff meetings and school board. We should continue to support our staff obtaining their ESL endorsement. And we should provide individual instruction for children based on the various learning methods of the students, whether they're visual learners, auditory, et cetera. I think our classrooms should promote inclusion. So our classroom should be well-equipped with artwork that is student-created. The books in the classroom should reflect cultural and racially diverse authors as well as artwork. Classroom should be filled with students' families' pictures. And also, I think we should have monthly cultural celebrations that welcome parents and staff to participate that include food, music and dancing. And I also believe that every school should be equipped with a cultural committee, one for students, one for staff and also one for parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert.
I believe we need to strengthen the programs for the English learners by requiring and making key reforms clear to the educators and families. Family engagement is an important part of the student's success. We need to focus on developing promising practices and scaling up effective practices for improving the instruction of English learners and for preparing and developing effective teachers of English learners. As a district, we should maintain and strengthen our programs by continuously identifying the grants and funding resources that are available for our English learners and educators and have a financial and personal support that they need for success. We can, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina?
Yes, I agree with Paul. When we educate our parents and we get parents involved in learning the language, that will bridge that gap in the home. And then the students will see their parents also learning the language. We need to provide services such as software services for parents, have literature for parents so that we can bridge that gap. I believe that once you have translation services, which I know you guys have, but it helps when parents understand a language. We have to start at the home first so that we can bring it to our students. So our students, who we know are the ones who are translating to our parents, but if we get our parents into like an adult ed program where the teachers are the ones who are teaching the parents, that will also bring, bridge that gap between teacher, student and home.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, you know, we need to expand our English language development program in the K-12 and at the college level and work for greater diversity for the faculty, the administration and to support the staff and also educate these parents as much as we can. And use our research best practices in Michigan and across the country and to develop a good language program.
Thank you. Kudar?
Absolutely. So as I had mentioned in my intro, that I was a zero English speaker myself when I first immigrated here 11 years ago. And I know the extreme hardship that a student or any individual goes through as they try to learn the language and navigate and compete and everything in between. I think that Dearborn is certainly a very hospitable, generous and very welcoming city and community. And certainly our school like that. And I really appreciate all the efforts that the staff and everybody, the admins that are putting into the ELL. I think we should include our parents more into the whole situation, support them more because the student's success is going to be also, you know, is a collective effort between the parents and the school and the academic team. On the other hand, I would like to say that we should promote our great diversity in every single way, shape and form, in every occasion, through food, art, dancing, you know, music songs. You know, our community should break the fear more and more. And one more thing, special education individuals, individuals with different abilities, they are part of the social fabric. So it's okay to see somebody with a different ability. That's very important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sharifa will wind it up.
From what I know, our district already provides really good programs. We need to continue building and maintaining these programs and adapting them to our ever-needing change. Our changing needs, I apologize. I do know just from my prior work experience that parent involvement is so important and it's crucial to your child's success. And to bridge that gap in helping build not only the kids' confidence, but the parents' confidence. You know, when kids, when parents approach teachers and they're hesitant and they don't have an understanding, building that confidence will bridge that gap to ensure their kids are succeeding, asking questions. Having the parents visible to the kids will also take away from, you know, how kids tend to try to, you know, manipulate their parents. So they're like sponges. Seeing their parents involved, seeing their parents' understanding will only motivate and help build their confidence and ask for the help needed from both parents. And the parents and the kids will help build together. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. This is the end of the questions. And we're just going to go to the closing remarks. You also have one minute and I'll give you a 10-second warning. So this is your final chance to tell us exactly why you are going to win on November 3rd. With that, we're going to start with Nafayla Haydar.
I'm going to need five minutes, Sammy. During these unprecedented times, our schools will face many challenges, many of which will affect students, parents and teachers directly. My experience, civic engagement, community involvement, along with my commitment to serve the students of Dearborn and my education, a bachelor and master's public administration degree from the University of Michigan, have prepared me to manage, organize and lead effectively. I believe that a partnership between educators, parents, policymakers and involved community members are key to improve curriculum, learning environment quality and funding for our schools. I want you to visit my website, nafaylahaydar.com and my social media pages to learn more about me. I'm running for the six-year term, so remember that on November 3rd, you can vote for three. Please consider Nafayla Haydar as one of your three votes November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Nafayla. Next, Molly?
Something I always like to say is, once a teacher, always a teacher. And I think those of us that are educators understand what that means and we take that statement to heart. So once you've taught children or students and you've been in the classroom, you develop that passion for education and you realize how powerful and empowering it is to change and transform someone's life through education, you understand your potential as an educator and as a leader. So I like to take my educational experience as a teacher, I take it everywhere I go and I will take it as trustee on the Board of Education.
Thank you. Nick?
Adel? Thank you, Mr. President. My campaign remains about quality education for our students, strong schools with happy educators. I will always advocate for an equitable allocation of resources for each student in our amazing district. I wholeheartedly believe that quality education is the foundation of the great good and the special gift that we can give to our children. I'm running to retain your trust because I love and care about our school and college. Late July, I filed for the third time for the same spot, a school board seat on your Dearborn Board of Education. I will always keep my promise that I will always continue to listen to your concerns and work with you to continuously improve the state of education in our district. I hope to earn your vote this fall to continue the unfinished work and to be your independent voice on the board. I'm Adel Mosab. I'm humbly asking for one of your three votes. As you vote this fall, please visit adelmosab.com for information about myself, to volunteer for the campaign or to donate. Appreciate you and thank you again to the Debs, Dearborn Debs for organizing this forum.
Thank you, Adel. Next, Mary? Mary, are you there?
Keeps on muting. I don't know why. Thank you. A school board is most effective when it represents a broad cross-section of the city and understands the board's responsibility to the entire community. We know we will be welcoming new members with fresh input next January. But retaining institutional knowledge to build upon, along with experienced, tested leadership, is an equally important contribution as well. With 10 years of board service and a perspective reflecting the more seasoned citizen, I won't say senior, that continues to have a vested interest in public education, I can help provide a vision and balance for the district's direction. During these challenging times, we need a strong, committed team to help our students and community succeed. So on November 3rd, I also am asking for your vote for one of the three six-year terms to be retained as a school board trustee for our future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Irene?
Thank you for this opportunity. I believe that every student here in Dearborn deserves a high-quality education, one that is rooted in the belief that every child is equal. We have an amazing community and our schools reflect the importance that we hold regarding their education. I've devoted my entire life to educating children and will continue my mission to support our children, our parents, our teaching staff, support staff and administration. I believe that Dearborn is integral in shaping Michigan's public schools and providing an opportunity to make Michigan's public schools the top 10 in the US in 10 years. We're in a unique position as an example of what can be accomplished when residents value education and children. I believe that my experiences as a parent, an educator, an administrator, a volunteer and a child advocate makes me a strong candidate that our school board needs going forward during these very uncertain times. Thank you and I hope to win your support during November 3rd's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Albert?
Thank you. With all community members, I have outlined the problems our district faces as I did during the BRICS bond proposal last year. I have rolled up my sleeves and began immediately reaching out to students, parents, educators and even our administration led by Dr. Glenn Malako to help solve our issues together. I delivered the message that no one else would with the expectation of getting bashed and humiliated in front of my children for doing so. I stand here before you today, along with an overwhelming population, that agree we have a problem in our district but want a new bold transition into the future of education. I'm not trying to save money by fighting school bonds. I'm here to work with you and provide a much-needed 20-year plan to propel us together to greater heights, even if it costs me more. I am invested in Dearborn and my children, being the only children of any team here, candidate running for a school board is a testimony to that. I put forth a time and recommendations since the last ballot proposal and I have never left your side. Please join me in this great journey and allow me to work for you, our educators, and most importantly, our children. Their future depends on us. Please consider Albert Abis for school board on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Sabrina?
Yes, on November 3rd, I'm asking for your vote for the two-year term. Although I am a new resident in Dearborn, I do have a passion for education, have a passion for children. I've been in education for 28 years, from a support staff member to curriculum leader, assistant principal, and I've served in other capacities within not only this city, but other cities, working with children. I am an advocate for children. I am an advocate definitely for students with special needs, having a special needs system myself. I'm very happy to, one, be a part of all of you guys to let you guys know that I love the diversity that I see on the screen. And I would love to be one of your candidates for the two-year term and I ask for your support.
Thank you. Next, Patrick? Patrick, are you there? Did we lose Patrick? Okay, we need to go to Khadur and then we'll go to Patrick if he's around. Khadur, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you move your camera a little bit to the left?
So, that good?
Good, yeah, great.
Thank you for letting me know. So I'm an active member of this Dearborn community. I'm a public speaker advocate. A graduate with my political science degree and a vicious fighter for equality, equity and accessibility and quality education. By voting for me to become the next school board trustee, I'll make sure that quality education is going to be like no other choice. Equity, more opportunities, better opportunities, our teachers, our staff, our parents, substance abuse, mental health, Henry Ford College, transparency, accountability, and I'll be your voice. If nothing stood in my way to achieve my goals and dreams on the personal and the public service career that I'm so blessed to belong to, then I'm pretty sure that nothing else is going to stand in my way and in our way collectively to reach a better education system. We have great things going on, but there's always a room for improvement. And as I always say, it doesn't take sight to have a vision. I hope to earn one of the three votes on the six-year term for myself, Khadur Farhat. I appreciate you. Thank you so much. And I appreciate all the colleagues that are running, putting a lot of time and effort. Thank you. Best of which is to all.
Thank you, Khadur. Do we have Patrick back or? Okay, we're going to Sharifa?
Hi.
Patrick is muted. Okay, go ahead, Sharifa and we'll go up to Patrick. Okay, go ahead, Sharifa, and we'll go up to Patrick when we...
Okay. I want to start by thank you for putting this form together. It's really nice to be here with a group of people who care about our community and our children. This is my first campaign, and I'm really enjoying it. And it's unfortunate that this virus is hindering our ability to meet in person. I would have truly liked to have the opportunity to chat with activists and voters who value education as much as I do. As we know, this election is historic and crucial for the future of our country. I'm also hopeful that we reach the highest turnout ever in order to safeguard our democracy. But I am aware that most voters are interested in the top of the ticket. I invite you all to fill out the entire ballot, all the way down to the nonpartisan section, where you can vote for local judges and for the Supreme Court, and of course, for the Board of Education. Remember, all politics is local. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you guys, regardless of the outcome. Please vote for Sharifa Gallup for Dearborn Board of Education. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Sharifa. Do we have Patrick back? Patrick, are you there? Okay, then we're gonna go to Paul. Paul, go ahead.
Thanks for this opportunity. I am honored to be among such qualified and wonderful candidates. I've really enjoyed this evening, get to know a little bit more about each of you. I'm not gonna redo my introduction and talk about my competence and experience and all those sorts of things. I just want to take a second and give a huge shout-out to teachers and staff. This is an unprecedented time, but going forward, we need to listen to them more, and I plan to do that. I supported the BRICS bond, but we need more clarity, and we need better communications to our community. I want to look forward to the future and think strategy, think long-term, and be innovative, like starting school later, longer school lunches, and things like that. I'm Paul Goddard. I'm running for the six-year term, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. One more last time. Patrick, are you there? Well, sorry, you are having some issues communicating. But with that being said, I would like to thank you all for attending our forum. That was really a great experience. But most importantly is really that we are so lucky in this community to have so many talented and qualified candidates, you know, running for school board to serve this community and to serve our schools. And I would like to wish all of you a good luck. As you know, voting already started. So I hope, you know, people who did not vote yet, now they have a better idea who their candidate is. And we would like to remind everybody, you know, if you vote a straight party ticket, please make sure you go to an unpartisan section, because judges and school boards and others, they are nonpartisan. So it's very important to flip the page and go over. Also, there are some proposals on this ballot. Please vote on all of these. With that being said, thank you so much, and have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's nice seeing faces to names. So maybe we'll see each other running. Have a blessed night. Bye. Good night. Thank you.